Well, you can. It's an informal meeting. Hey, good evening. Tonight, we have a subcommittee on conference on Affordable Housing Trust, 41 and 43 Orange Street. I will take attendance first. Councilor Vido. Councilor Abashinata.
Present.
Councilor Recupero. Absent. Councilor Garcia.
And?
Melinda Vega Maldonado. Councilor Robinson, present. Your mayor. Absent. Todd Taylor, present. Enios. Present. Calvin Brown. Absent. And Naomi Sabat, absent. One, two, three, four, five being present. We do not have a quorum, but we will proceed with the meeting, the call of the meeting, due to the fact that there will be a presentation by the Housing Trust Board. The following subject matter will be discussed. The resolution we got on 41, 43 Orange Street, Affordable Housing Trust Fund Transfer Request. This was moved to conference by me on the request of the President of the Council, Roy Abashinata, and I'd ask Councilor Abashinata if he has any opening remarks at this time.
No, I'd just rather just get right to the presentation so that we can hear from the AFTB, and then the motion, the order will come back to the City Council for a final vote.
Okay, thank you. The presentation is going to be by Alex Train. He can take the mic. And, yeah, both of yous can, yeah.
Just let the actual person of the trust introduce himself first.
Yeah.
Good evening, Gary D. Young, Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board. Thank you guys for considering this and for having us.
So, thank you, members of Council, for taking the time to meet with myself and the members of the Trust Fund Board tonight. So, my name is Alex Train. I'm the Director of Housing and Community Development with the City of Chelsea. And we're here tonight to discuss the proposal for 41, 43 Orange Street, which was a request to transfer two city-owned parcels from the city government of Chelsea to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board for the purposes of creating new affordable housing. So, we have a short presentation that frames the site, the context in the neighborhood, as well as the general timeline for the project that would occur if the Council voted favorably upon the Trust Fund Board's request. First, Fatima, are they able to see the presentation at home on their computers? Perfect. Thank you.
Continue.
Okay, great. Would you mind going to the second slide, please? Up the one right above that one. That one, perfect. Great, thank you. So, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board is a municipal housing trust with the mission of preserving, creating, and educating the public on affordable housing in the city of Chelsea. And the trust is a unique board in that it holds the power to both acquire, sell, redevelop, and operate property, as well as manage and administer housing programs that promote affordable homeownership and affordable rental housing for Chelsea residents. The trust is supported by a Housing and Community Preservation Coordinator, Desiree Valentin, in the Department of Housing and Community Development. And they meet on a monthly basis to discuss housing policy, planning, and project management. Over the course of the last two years, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board has put together a strategic action plan that would govern the use of the trust funds for the purposes of creating and preserving affordable housing. They have one pool of funds that is for general affordable housing purposes, and they have a second pool of funds from the Chelsea City Council for the purpose of creating low- and moderate-income homeownership opportunities for residents. About six months ago, give or take, the City Council approved and submitted a home rule petition to the legislature that would allow the Trust Fund Board to take possession of city-owned properties that were acquired through the tax title foreclosure process. The goal of this home rule petition was to provide the Trust Fund Board with the property necessary to spur the first affordable housing development projects and address significant gaps in the affordable housing landscape. In particular, we saw this as an opportunity to produce housing types that the market was not otherwise producing. Moreover, we saw this as an opportunity to create neighborhood-scale affordable housing that was responsive to the surrounding characteristics of the neighborhood and served the needs of Chelsea residents. So, the first parcel that has been identified since the passage of this home rule petition is 41, 43 Orange Street. It consists of two small parcels in a densely settled residential neighborhood, and we'll walk you through an analysis of the site, as well as the general timeline and proposal from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board. Would you mind going to the next slide, please? And next one. So, 41, 43 Orange Street is located centrally in the Addison-Orange neighborhood. It's about half a block from the intersection of Eden Street and Orange Street, a short distance from Cary Square, the commuter rail station, Silverline 3 service, as well as local parks like Eden Park and neighborhood schools. The site is surrounded currently by a mixture of two- and three-family residential dwellings coupled with larger multifamily apartment buildings ranging from five to 10 units. Opposite the property is the Chelsea Housing Authority's 14 Bloomingdale Street, which overshadows the property in terms of scale and stature. The property provides a walkable setting for residents to reach different schools, to run errands, and visit local businesses and restaurants, as well as enjoy different community amenities, such as parks, playgrounds, and other recreational opportunities. Next. So presently, the district that the site is situated within is Zoned Residential 2. Presently, it holds sort of a small sideyard setback and allows for what we call neighborhood-scale residential development. So, this is traditionally not the large apartment-type of buildings that we've seen sprout up along Everett Ave or near transit locations, but more manageable, smaller-scale residential development. The site is presently a vacant lot. It's paved, it's relatively flat, and it would be conducive to affordable housing development. It's approximately 5,300 square feet in size, and it sits between a two-family home and a 10-unit apartment building that were both built around the turn of the 20th century. Presently, there are numerous streetscape connections that tie the site in with the general neighborhood. So, that includes pedestrian connections up to Cary Square to Chelsea High School, as well as to the commuter rail station. In some locations, the streetscape is in moderate-to-fair condition, but in other locations, it's been significantly deteriorated over the course of the last five to 10 years. Our department, in partnership with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, has secured a grant from the Department of Housing and Community Development's Housing Choice Capital Grant to fully reconstruct the sidewalks along the stretch of Orange Street between Eden and Spruce. This would allow for a new streetscape with ADA-compliant crosswalks, traffic calming and pavement markings, and modern sidewalks for residents to use to access local amenities. Moreover, it would also serve the future uses of this site once a use is decided upon by the City Council and the Trust Fund Board. Next. So, this is a parcel map just depicting the two parcels in question. So, on the left-hand side, you have 41 and 43, which are both adjoined. They're completely paved and vacant presently and surrounded by a perimeter fence. There's a photograph on the right-hand side that provides a street view of what the properties look like today. As you can see, they aren't currently used for any particular use, and they're boarded by two residential buildings with the Chelsea Housing Authority Building in the backdrop. Next. So, this is an image that seeks to depict the scale of the surrounding neighborhood in the context of these two sites. So, as you can see, to the right of the site primarily is three- and four-family dwellings, and tucked in the back of the site is 14 Bloomingdale, which is far taller than surrounding buildings. To the left of the site is a four-story apartment building that has approximately 10 units in it, built before 1900s. And the surrounding neighborhood is a mix of these larger apartment buildings interspersed with three-family dwellings. So, from our analysis so far, we've been able to determine that some form of neighborhood-scale development at the site would be appropriate. Such development would have to be respectful of the scale of the surrounding buildings. It would also have to respond to the architecture of the neighborhood so that it's harmonious with the surrounding area. At this time, the Trust Fund Board hasn't selected a number of units for this project or any type of architectural details, but they wanted to first approach Chelsea City Council to open up a discussion about the opportunity and to hear from Council what their main housing priorities are that could be realized through this project. Next. So, if Council were to vote favorably upon this request, there are certain critical next steps that the Trust Fund Board would take. First, the Trust Fund Board, with technical assistance from the Massachusetts Housing Partnership, would undertake some due diligence and conceptual design activities. These activities would consist of a title search and legal review of the two properties, an environmental investigation of the properties, as well as the employment of an architect who could help model conceptually different housing options that could be viable on the site. This architect would look at things like massing, scale, as well as the economic viability of different development scenarios. Ultimately, the preferred development scenario and the housing objectives of the Council and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board would be synthesized into a request for proposals. That request would be prepared by our department and issued in concert with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board. The Trust Fund Board would seek a private development partner to purchase, redevelop, and operate the site exclusively as affordable housing. We expect that the due diligence and design process would take pretty much the rest of 2021, with procurement culminating with the award of a contract from an RFP process occurring sometime by mid-2022. From that point, the selected developer would have to proceed with permitting and financing activities and then eventually break ground on the project. Currently, we are exploring different scenarios to expedite the construction schedule, such as permitting the property before it's released in the request for proposals, a similar approach that the city took for the Salvation Army Building. This is just a tentative schedule that's really meant to be informational for City Council. Once we delve into the details with Mass Housing Partnership, the schedule is bound to change, but we'll keep City Council informed throughout every step of the process. And so with that, it concludes our presentation on the site, as well as the request. So, the Trust Fund Board is requesting the transfer of the property from Chelsea City Council to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Boards to proceed with this project. I'm happy to answer any questions, as is Gary D. Young, the chairperson of the Affordable Housing Trust. Thank you.
Gary want to address the Council?
Sure. I don't have much to add beyond what Alex has already said, except I just want to reiterate that we are very invested in getting the input from City Council right from the beginning and from there, continuing to get input from the community. And we've been talking a lot about how to execute that, and that's going to be one of our first priorities. So, we'd just love to hear your perspective and what your goals are for affordable housing in the community.
Thank you. Questions? Councilor Roy Abashinata?
Yes, first question. If I'm not mistaken, this is an R2 zone, so I'm just trying to confirm, being in R2, this would allow by right a three-family to be built there, correct, Alex?
So, since it's an R2 zone, in order to do one to three units, you would need a minimum of 3,500 square feet of lot coverage. So, to do anything more than one unit right now, you would need some form of zoning relief. So, that's going to be relief either for the lot size, for the setbacks, for the parking, or for the open space. I think it would be really difficult to do anything more than one unit here by right without obtaining any further zoning relief.
So, you are currently cannot have that 5,000-square-foot lot given the current restrictions on R2, correct?
Correct. You would need more than 5,000 square feet to, yeah, to be able to do anything more than one unit. So, we have about 5,300 square feet right now. So, you could do one unit, but you would need additional square footage in order to do that second and third unit.
Follow-up question. The goal here, I think, if I'm not mistaken, was to create this as a first-time homeownership opportunity?
That's correct. So, the Trust Fund Board is seeking to carry out an affordable homeownership project on the site.
Okay. Have there been any preliminary discussions, even though the RFP has not been out, of who may respond to the RFP? Has there been anyone such as, in the past, Chelsea Restoration has done something like this? Not so much from ground up, the building, but they've done, they've taken property, problem properties from the city in the past and have, you know, repaired them, upgraded them, and then sold them as first-time homeowner opportunities. So, has Chelsea Restoration shown any interest in this or anyone else to date? Even though we know that the RFP still has to go out? Has there been any feedback on this regard?
So, you know, as you know, the sort of development market right now, both affordable and market rates, pretty active in this sort of size of development opportunities. So, at this time, we have not had any discussions with any prospective developers. It was really important to the Trust Fund Board to speak with Council first, hear what your feedback is, and let that inform the approach here. So, following this meeting and hopefully the approval of the request, we would then engage with prospective developers on any opportunities that might rest ahead.
Is there, besides this being a, again, would there be any extra funds? Do they foresee, does the AFTB foresee any expenditure of the funds that they have, you know, in their account to make this project get off the ground? Or is this simple, simply something that they expect a developer to carry on the full load? Do we have any idea where this may go?
Do you want to answer that, Gary? I don't want to speak on behalf of the Board.
We haven't really discussed, you know, discussed it at that level or at that level of specifics yet. I think my sense of, based on our conversations that we've had so far, is that we would be willing to spend some of those funds if necessary. But I think we would have to look at the plans, at the costs, and also consider the value of the land and, you know, all things considered, would our funds be necessary? So, I think it really kind of depends on what the proposal from the developer would be and basically necessity based on their costs.
Well, I mean, if you're looking for feedback from the, you know, the City Council, I'm going to be speaking from the approach of my colleagues, but I personally, I would like to see, as for the RFP, is obviously homeownership opportunity. And given the lot size, I am in support of increase in density that the city manager and staff proposed. If we use those guidelines on that 5,000-square-foot lot, I can see anywhere from a three-unit building, maximum four. I would not support anything more than four units being done on that lot, providing that they fit, you know, parking on-site, because that's going to be the concern of the neighborhood in that area. So, you know, again, that's what I would say. Me personally, is what I've seen in the past, what I've seen, you know, development in other lots and similar sizes, and being consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. If, I think the neighborhood, or at least I would consider supporting is three to four maximum opportunities of homeownership to be built there. And that's where I would be in favor of seeing so. But I'll let my colleagues, you know, state their own position.
Any other Councilor? Todd Taylor?
So, I agree with what Roy had suggested. Might just be this be a homeownership opportunity. I think we ought to try to, as far as affordable housing goes, the city, try to start doing homeownership so we can give people a chance at actually achieving the American dream, owning their own home, and actually staying put in Chelsea instead of just revolving door over and over and over and over again. So, I think that a three-unit project is reasonable and, you know, if you can get, sorry, there's bad feedback. If you can get a developer to kind of take it over, you know, or power to you, but I think if you would need to spend some of that money in the Trust Fund, then, you know, I would support that, too.
Councilor?
I just want to clarify one thing that I didn't mention to be on record. While I say three to four, and I'm looking this to be first-time homeownership opportunities, I would expect, you know, to get as close to 100% affordable, all the units to be affordable. Now, I understand, maybe the numbers don't work for a developer to build it unless there's money thrown in by the AFTB, which is what I meant, you know. Who knows if they're saying, well, if we can build, you know, all these four units and they all be affordable, deed it affordable and such, subsidized. But if it's a thing, I'm not looking for a developer to come in, build four units, only one is affordable. That would not be something I would support. I expect this to be anywhere from 100% to a minimum, maybe, with $0 from the city and subsidizing it 50%, you know, saying, okay, to market rate, to affordable, something. It all depends, of course, what comes in. But if there's some subsidization that needs to be thrown in, anything's on the table as far as AFTB taking $100,000 from their fund and throwing it in to it to be affordable, whatever it may be. But let me make sure I'm on the record here saying, I expect that these homeownership condos are affordable, deed it affordable, not market rate with just one or two. So, yes, own ownership, but high-level, 75%, 100% affordable. Thank you.
Councilor Taylor?
Sorry, I just had one more comment. It had some discussions previously with members of the Board and about whether to deem these homeownership opportunities as affordable in perpetuity. I would be against that, only because I think that the goal of affordable housing is to kind of lift people out of that kind of pool. And so, the more that we can reduce the pool of people who need affordable housing, the better. And if you deem these things in perpetuity and you're constantly having, you know, you're locking yourself in forever to these being affordable housing units, when hopefully, good policy will reduce the number of those people who will have to rely on affordable housing. So, I, you know, I understand the other side, but I think the real goal is to try to help people come out of that pool. And, you know, I think that's what all of this is about, and not just doing it for its own sake.
Councilor Abashinata?
As someone who has worked on the, on that side of the ledger where we are having affordable deed it, I will oppose what Counselor Taylor has just stated, that these are not deed it in perpetuity. Because the whole idea of providing an affordable housing opportunity for somebody is that they get to buy a home at a very low price than market has, and that they are saving over time money. They have taken advantage of the tax benefits of deducting from, that they pay on a mortgage when they file any taxes, again, accruing that. And while an affordable unit can increase value over time much lower than market rate in some instances, the idea of building these is so that maybe in 10, whatever, years down the road, when that person who's owned the affordable wants to move out and sell, they're not all of a sudden gotten the lottery ticket, because that's what this turns into. Who gets to one of the lottery tickets? And then the next person behind them doesn't get to have the affordable. We've just, you know, lost the opportunity. So, I have thought Boxworks is a project that we are learning lessons. There were affordable-deed units, and for whatever the reason, the protections were not there. They, in one case, was foreclosed. And the new owner, who happened to be a real estate professional, went, bought a foreclosure in affordable unit, filed in court to take the restriction away, and then sold that affordable unit at market rate prices, which was $100,000 more than what that affordable unit could have been sold for. So, the whole point of this, of creating affordable housing opportunities, is so that they are there for long term and that, yes, maybe, someone else later on. It's the same with rentals. If there's an affordable housing rental, if that tenant moves out, we don't all of a sudden say, okay, you can now rent this at market rate. Therefore, you defer the whole, you defeat the whole purpose of creating affordable housing in the area. So, I think that, you know, we shouldn't be limiting the timetable of when an affordable housing ownership opportunity ends. If they get the lottery ticket and they get to buy a home and with that all the benefits, then when they sell, they shouldn't all of a sudden, you know, up the ante and make profit on, you know, that unique opportunity that we are giving them with this city land.
Have you talked about what the makeup of the units will be? I mean, we always seem to be locked into this one- and two-bedroom scheme. And I think that there are families out there who need three bedrooms that need affordable units. And have you given thought about how to address that or look at that to see whether it fits into the scheme?
Absolutely. So one of the key goals of our strategic housing plan is to create family-size housing, meaning units with more than two bedrooms to accommodate households with children. So looking at the feasibility of doing larger units with more than two bedrooms will be something that we'll task the architect with to see if it's viable here. I do think that it would align really well with our housing goals, and it would obviously serve an unmet need that's really not being addressed right now.
Yeah, I agree with that. The, you know, my concern is that we're not really addressing the larger units in this community and that everything seems to boil down to one or two bedrooms, which knocks out a lot of families who might have the opportunity to win that ticket to get one of the affordable units. The question is, are we going to be able to control? I know because of certain housing rules, I know like in some of the developments, they say, well, 70% have to be Chelsea residents. And I think that some of the confusion at times for me when I say 70% of the units, but they're talking about 70% of the affordable units have to be Chelsea people. So the whole, there's that whole misconception that you're working off the whole number, but you're actually not. You're only working off the affordable units. And I think that's what confuses a lot of Chelsea residents when you say 70% are going to be Chelsea residents. And it could be, you know, 40 units, but only 10 are really going to be for Chelsea people. You know, I want to see how we can address that when we do this project.
Yeah, definitely. So I think that if it's, you know, locally financed, meaning that it doesn't involve any type of federal dollars, we can place a 100% resident preference on it. This is something similar to what we do in the city's Inclusionary Housing Program. It's just once you start tacking in federal financing is when that 70% rule comes up. So I think our goal would be for this to really prioritize existing residents, prioritize existing families. You can also set preferences related to veteran status, disability status, and so on. So that's something we'll be looking at pretty carefully.
Good, thanks. Any other questions from my colleagues? Roy, you want any closing statements?
Simply that I appreciate the time that both Alex and the chairperson from the AFTB spent in giving this. We are, I personally, I can't speak to my colleagues, I'm very excited that we're going to create this opportunity. And I look forward to both voting in favor of this transfer and also to be working with both Alex and the board on the RFP process. I think it's, I've been saying for a while now, we don't do, we haven't been doing enough, I don't think, the city, when we look at all the constructions that's happened in the last few years. It's been heavily apartment rental, but not enough homeownership opportunities. And I'm glad to see that we're finally, at least for a counselor, we're finally have a vote that can go in that direction. We really don't have the votes when it comes to what gets developed. You know, again, with ownership versus rental. There is no vote for me to take, otherwise I would have taken. This is the first time that I get to vote on something that will actually go in that direction, which I've been lobbying for. So I'm excited, and I appreciate the time and this opportunity that the city is doing. And I'm happy that we all voted back last year for this tax title takeover to happen and to finally get an opportunity to have this happen. So that's all.
Just for the record, I'd like to recognize my former colleague, Brian Hadelberg, who's also involved in the Housing Trust Board, and also make note that the Assistant City Manager, Ned Keith, is here. I'd like to thank you for the presentation, and we'll be looking forward to possibly seeing you at the next meeting. Thank you for your time. Seeing no further business before this council, we will be adjourned.